I'd like to call the special counsel meeting for seven o'clock to order. Just give me one second here. Let's start with the acknowledgement of treaties of peace and friendship. We would like to begin by acknowledging that the land on which we gather is traditional unceded territory of the Mi'amam peoples. This territory is covered by the treaties of peace and friendship, which Willishtewaik, Mi'amam, and Passamaquoddy peoples first signed with the British Crown in seventeen twenty-six. The treaties did not deal with surrender of lands and resources, but in fact recognized Mi'amam Willishtewaik title and established the rules for what was to be an ongoing relationship between nations. Thank you, Wollalen. Next is the reaffirmation of the oath of office. We do hereby accept the office of counsel and will diligently, faithfully, and impartially discharge, to the best of our ability, the duties of the office as may be imposed upon us by law. Next is the adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
M. twenty twenty-three, zero three, zero six dash forty-seven, that we, that the agenda be accepted as adopted?
Can I get a second there?
I'll second it.
On the question, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Next to the statements of conflict of interest. If you have an interest, conflict of interest, register with the clerk. Next, four point one is the hiring of the chief administrative officer. Can I get a motion?
M. twenty-three, uh, twenty twenty-three, zero three, zero six dash forty-eight, that the village of Council of Beldoon hire Lannan Lee as a permanent full-time CEO with contract terms to be determined and rectified by the future vote of council.
Can I get a second there?
I'll second it.
On the question?
I have something. I just want to point out the irony of the appointment of Lannan Lee to this position. The mayor, three months ago, was on Facebook complaining about alleged corruption on the renovations of this building. Two months before that, the mayor and deputy mayor, behind the backs of council, tried to hire an accountant to do a audit on the building, looking for procedures that were not followed. So I find it ironic that those two would support this appointment. I guess maybe there will be a reward for their loyalty in the future.
Anyone else?
I'd also like to say that I am very disappointed with council's decision with this appointment. I feel as though, everything Cynthia said, I agree with that. I find it very strange that two people who were convinced that there was wrongdoings done on such a big and expensive project are now looking to hire back the person who was in charge of that same project. This person, you know, kind of walked out, left us high and dry. There was no files left. There was, uh, the computer was wiped out. So I think that to be hiring someone back who you already know is willing to drop everything and leave you high and dry, um, he obviously didn't have the community in mind when he did that. His reasoning at the time was he didn't want to be in public eye. So I don't know what's changed from now until then, but I'm very disappointed. I feel like we had the opportunity to bring in some, uh, some fresh blood and some, uh, you know, somebody who has proven experience in getting the job done and, you know, moving our village forward. Unfortunately, that's not going to be the case. So here we are.
Anyone else?
If I may, worship. Just wanted to comment that, uh, at the end of the day, uh, the council, all members of council do not have to like the decisions of council. The only thing they have to do is respect the majority vote. So at the end of the day, um, you know, uh, council is not going to agree on every decision every single time. But the other side of the coin is, is that the two council members have fought for procedures and policies to be followed. Um, you know, they've even taken action against that, or for that, I should say. And with that said, uh, as the vote will go, and, you know, we haven't taken the vote yet, so we're not sure which way it's going to go at, at this moment in time. But the other side of the coin is, is that once the vote is taken, um, council should show the respect for the decision of the majority of council, and, uh, that's it. That's the way it should be.
Counselor, are you retiring, Maitland-Lowell, or Counselor Cromichael? Okay, then we'll move forward with the vote. All those in favor, oh, sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Motion passed. Mr. Allen with three to two. And, um, so next we'll move on to the motion to adjourn. Can I get a second there? On the question, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion adjourned.
Well, first of all, this is my first time addressing council. I had no idea we had so many female counters. I just helped these men that have done such a poor job, I guess, over centuries, that women were taking care of them. This job will be replaced by my lady. And I know most of volunteer orders I had was about the natural resources. We're females, by the way. It's more serious than men. So, uh, the reason I'm here is, uh, to make the request, uh, can't see if it's stupid, but we have, the salmon, not behalf, the salmon for the public, to, uh, have a well dug at the Jack River Barrier where the compostage is now, where the trailer is, so we can insert cold water into that pool, uh, in the future. Now, global warming, you see on TV every two or three days, even years ago, we would have water in the river up to twenty-seven degrees Celsius. I see it twenty-nine degrees here, and that water is pretty warm under those shallow rocks and those fripples in that river. All those salmon have, uh, are at the barrier pool. The reason we have them is to protect them from being posed upstream. We allow them to drill still, as they're being trapped, put upstream for the angers and the cold water. Just want to go a little bit of background. I've been in this area for fifty years. First survey, we were here in sixty-seven on the Jack River. And I remember one day I was dropped off, off the Benjamin Portage by Paul Tatlock, if some of you recall. And, uh, I walked thirteen miles down Rocky Brook that day with no trail or whatever, doing the stream survey, the fish habitat, then a mile down the jacket, threw my sleep bag in a, in the mud of a beaver pond, fell asleep, figuring I'd be able to walk again the next day. I was in pretty good shape back then. Anyway, next day I walked another several miles down to a kettle hole, and I supposed to have met my buddies overnight, but they never showed up. They had left Head Lake up in the old IP road. They're going to meet me at the mouth of Rocky Brook. Never saw each other. Plane goes over and found out it was a search plane, trying to find us and see if we're all okay. We were okay. And so that was my first stream survey. And then back in, I became a biologist here in nineteen sixty-nine, from, uh, Beldoon to St. Quentin. So I was a local biologist in Fish and Wildlife Management for the public, working with Department Natural Resources. I've stayed in the ranger cache here overnight, back in those years. Then nineteen seventy-two, uh, with the support of the public here, Paul Tatlock and I telephoned ninety-two people by phone, whose names we had from Fish Patrol reports, asking them if they would support fly fishing only in Jack River, new regulation. They did. Feds bought it. We got that done. Then nineteen seventy-nine, I had this great idea that protect the salmon better than almost anything, it was to hold them in a pool and protect them there. Bring all the wardens down, bring the watchdogs down, get left other wardens more time to spend another rivers and so on. So we did that on the northwest of the British River, back in seventy-nine. The project's still going there. In nineteen ninety-four, Paul Tatlock said, why don't we do it here? So we had a public meeting here. Must have been close to a hundred people, it was unanimous, including the poachers who were in the room. Said, yeah, let's do it. So I didn't know that, but the rangers told me afterward, there were four fellows who'd been sneaking around, trying to get extra fish over the years, uh, there. But even, it was good for them too. More fish we can create, it's better for them. So we've had the project here for twenty-eight years. We've held over ten thousand salmon at that pool, believe it or not. It's the most we, is that mine? That's the first time I've ever had a phone ring on me. That shows you how little I use cell phones. Will I do it? I hope. So we've held, uh, up to ten thousand salmon in this river, this little dinky river, and a lot of folks here wouldn't know that. This river used to be leased back in nineteen twenties and thirties. It was considered that important a river. So people who had enough money back then leased waters, not only in the rescue, where the millionaires fish, they leased the jacket too. So, um, the project's been very successful. Often we have trouble keeping the fencing nowadays because of global warming. We have sudden freshets in the summer, which nobody ever saw before. Sometimes it'll take the fence out. Um, but the staff stays on and they, uh, are able to count the fish. Some of the biggest runs in this river are not in the summertime. They can occur in October, and, uh, one year they occurred in November the second. That's why you want to keep that fence as long as you can, because there's still fish leaving saltwater even then, and we're trying to protect them to, uh, provide fishing for the public. And if you've already heard perhaps that when the fence does wash out, the angler here is second to none. The rescue is not better than here, when the fish, if the fish get by all of a sudden, and the people fish for them up around halfway, and they go in a long pool and so on. So, um, we've had, what, four straight drought years, except for this past year, which no living person ever saw before. Two is unusual to have two back-to-back. Then it was a third one. Then it was a fourth one. So, uh, we're all learning. The droughts mean we have shallower water in the river, which means it warms up easier. So that little brook at the trailer was dry, uh, more than once. So the request I'm making, and I want you to request if you can, if you support the project that much, and you don't want a fish die off at the pool, and you've done a marvelous job so far for all those years, but you realize this is the only privately funded barrier of the six in the province. Irving had one too, but it got closed down about six, seven years ago. They had some issue, don't know what it was. This is the only one, kept going by the public. The rest are by Department Natural Resources. Um, and Gas Bay has had twelve or fifteen of them. So thirty million dollars is spent on these salmon barriers up till about eight years ago. I worked it out myself. That's a lot of money, so the public thinks that they're worthwhile. So for this one, I don't know much about wells, but I had one dug on my own property. It cost me four thousand dollars about ten years ago. It's only thirty-two feet deep. We dug a well at Ten Mile Pool, because the water is getting warm, about twenty years ago. I had nothing to do with it, give the credit to another biologist from Frederick, and they dug down only ten feet and they hit, uh, eight or nine degree water. You can't hold your hand in it. And my well water, I was a trout pond, you cannot hold the water, your hand in that either for more than about a minute. Eight, nine degrees seems to be what groundwater is in our wells, because it's insulated from the sun. So I don't know how deep a person would have to go down here, and you wouldn't want to get heavy metals, so we have to test the water quality. So that's the request I have here, is, uh, look into that, see how feasible it is, see if it's practical, there's different funding sources. Often a lot more funds available than people go for. I've heard that. Even for scholarships for kids in college, most are not actually, um, sought. Didn't realize that until I was well, well out of college. And I know, we talk in DNR a lot about public funding, and we have come to realize, in the worst economic times, usually there's a lot of money sitting out there if people know how to get it. So that's all I have to say anyway. I wanted you to hear, or head, so this is in your, your hands. If you want to eat salmon, pumping cold water in the future for the kiddies, kiddies enjoy the project too, adults do. Keep your men happy, get out of your hair, they're fishing, they're in better physical shape when they come home, better mental attitude. That's the reason you women should support it.
Thank you. Do you have any questions, Valer?
Uh, just a comment, if I may, worship. There, there have been a lot of things go on at the salmon barrier. There have been experiments trying with babies, you know, having small salmon, and then they feed them all summer long, and then in the fall they're released into the Jacket River. Um, you know, how successful that has been, I don't know, but I do, yeah, I, I do know that they, they did mark some of those salmon and, uh, with some kind of, on the tail fin or whatever it may be. And, uh, you know, they're starting to see some of them coming back, but at the end of the day, what's happening there now at the mouth is with the bass, they're eating a lot of the fish as they come in. Um, you know, your comment about a well is, is a very interesting one, as far as I'm concerned. Um, you know, and just to comment on that, I have a camp on the Jacket River, one kilometer up from the salmon barrier on the river. I have sixty acres there.
Can you move by your camp?
Well, well, you probably do. I'm right at the flats there, right there. And, uh, we have a well there. We're down one hundred and sixty feet.
Did you have to go one hundred and sixty?
Yeah, one hundred and sixty feet, you know?
We hit riverbed water, wouldn't you?
That, that's what, that's what happened. We hit the river.
Our home was twenty-two feet deep. I live there.
So, but, uh, but at the end of the day, uh, the depth, in my opinion, wouldn't be the major factor. It would be, you know, to have the water or the volume of water able to be able to feed that and, and make it viable, because, um, you know, again, your comment about the, uh, the province, it's all, or the federal government, doesn't matter which one, it's always been a bone of contention with me, because if I were to say, the salmon barrier has been run by the village of Beldoon for twenty-eight, twenty-nine years now, um, an average of, if I, even if I took a hundred thousand just to make it a round number, and I know it's probably more like a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and thirty thousand average.
Thirty-five.
Exactly. So it's simple math. Uh, the village of Beldoon alone has probably two and a half to three million dollars tied up in the salmon barrier with, I don't want to say zero help from the government, but it's, it's fractional. And, uh, exactly. And, um, I, I agree with the comment that, you know, as a community, we deserve a lot of credit for taking the, uh, the initiative to preserve our salmon and, and deal with it. Um, you know, we, we seem to have a lot of people that do a lot of fishing, and, you know, there have been some instances, and I've, I've seen it, because I'm on the river a lot all summer, but, uh, in the majority, uh, people have been very, very respectful of the river and, and, uh, the fishing they do there. Uh, the last couple of years have been catch and release, and I've seen a lot of that. So people are respecting those regulations and that type of thing. But, uh, but your comment about the, uh, about the well and being able, is, is one that I believe is, is worth pursuing, and, um, I don't know, I, I don't want to assume your expertise, but certainly we could utilize that expertise in, in pursuing that further.
I'm retired twenty-three years now, and I have lots to do. I don't play, not many people are retired, what am I going to do? I'm going full toll. And, uh, in this term committee, I'm only a fisherman, I'm fishing fanatic, fish pass in the mother river, I fish pond every year, I fish macro lordy, fish sharks this year, I put out board and try for, I fish literally, it swims. So it's not, it's not for that reason, it's just I'm tired of the barrier, and it's what we come to the wardens, come back and forth, and when I found that nobody could compile their information the last twenty years, I, ah, it's like a travesty against society. Just couldn't believe it, because DNR officially is not into salmon anymore. We still have wardens protecting the fish, and we know where the salmon, we still buy, sell salmon licenses, and we still turn lessies, uh, the leases, so we are officially supposed to be not, supposed to be federal mandate, but you know the feds don't have the staff. You know, we never, barely had any skeleton staff, we really are on our own. And I'm on the rest of the Florida committee too, we're direct there, and just imagine that, we are really on our own, because we haven't been stable the last two to four years.
Because I, I can easily say that this last summer, um, the water of where I am, right at the flats, uh, is usually four to seven feet deep. It was not four foot deep this year, was not four foot deep. So there are some dramatic changes in the volume of water coming down the rivers, and, um, the temperatures are being affected, uh, you know, so your, your concern is one I believe is justified and should be looked at, because, uh, you know, we have a very unique, um, salmon barrier here, and, you know, uh, we do get a lot of people who stop there, whether they be four-wheelers or things of that nature, who visit the site, and, you know, um, I've, I've been told that even some of the schools send school buses full of kids to, to view it and things like that, so it.
Motion to protest.
Yeah.
Or a protest of thousands, or a protest of hundreds.
Yeah, so at the end of the day, uh, maybe I'll just finish this way. Um, So at the end of the day, maybe I'll just finish this way. If this was an avenue that we went down and looking at the possibilities, would you be able to give us some consulting recommendations if we went down that route? Because for...
I'm no expert in drilling at all. People here who know what we're drilling, I would think about a check around the base of the bottom of the rock first. Maybe dry the surface, maybe the water leaks it out underneath.
Yeah, okay.
Check what flow is coming out when you check a well? How much volume? And how long that volume lasts?
You know? So thank you very much for your presentation and your comments and your concern. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Carmichael?
Yes, I have three items. The fire and EMO meeting, I'd like to reschedule it this time for the third week of April. I'll be away the first week, so I don't like to miss the meeting. I already spoke to the chief, and he has no problem with it. So if the other council has no problem with switching it for the April 20th, that would be good. And if Nicole would be able to maybe send an email to the chief and the deputy chief, the chief is already aware of it. So that's my first item. Also, for the deputy mayor position, we were talking to the counselors from the Delhousy, or I should say, Heron Bay. And they were saying that what they did when they were elected, that everybody that was interested to put their name as deputy mayor had a fair, you know, time to be able. So they selected, there was three, I believe, that were selected, and they all divided the period between them. So I'd like to see that being done here, since at the moment we have no deputy mayor, and see who is interested into the position. And from there, we would each take a turn and divide it. I think that all we would need to say is that whoever's interested, put their name forward, and everyone would have an opportunity to fill that position for a period of time. So I don't know if any of the counselors have anything to say on that?
I'm in agreement with that. I feel if anyone is interested in it and wants to take a period of time in that position, it should be out there for us to do. And I understand that we would have to change the bylaw, the wording in it, and that I see that is no problem as well on my part.
So are you saying that at the deputy mayor position, it would no longer be an elected position?
It would be an elected position, but the counselors that are here at this time, anyone that's interested into the position, they would each get a turn to get it. And like, you know, like, we'd have to decide who was first, second, third, or fourth. Because, and fifth, because there's five counselors. And then you just do a period of time each for the deputy mayor. And it would be, okay, then you would, at a meeting, you would vote for it, and you would say, well, this one's going first, second, third, fourth, and fifth. And we would do it the rest of this term, and then we would do it starting the next term, whoever gets in on the next term for the election.
I'm just a little confused, because as it is now, anybody who wants to put their name in can put their name in, and then it would be voted upon? And then when that person's time runs out?
Well, this time, normally you can only go through three deputy mayors. That way, there would give all five counselors a chance to be deputy mayor at one period of time, maybe a nine-month period each. At next, and this time here, if there's three, it would be probably approximately 11 months. And if it would be two, four, it'd be nine months. And if there's two, it would be something like 15, 16 months. The per diem, I just, there was a discussion here the other day, that normally we don't put per diem in for when you're in the area. We normally have to go out of the area to get the per diem. So I have no issue to stay that way, but I'm not sure if other counselors are feeling the same. It's just, it was brought up that if you're in the area and you have to be there, and it's a request from the association to have, and you're representing the village, that you would put your name, you know, you would get the per diem even for, like, in the surrounding villages.
I will comment on that one, if I may, Your Worship. Because you're, I know you're referring to the per diem that I submitted, or the request that I submitted in attending a meeting on the most beautiful bays in the world. That meeting took place on a Saturday night from 6:00 to 10:00 o'clock at night in Charle. So the regulation of the per diem states that it is within the municipality, that the per diem is not paid. I do understand wholeheartedly that when you are a member of a committee, you know, some of those committees may meet outside of the municipality, and those meetings do not last all that long. The other thing, the other scenario comes down to that when you look at attending a function, for example, if there's a government announcement in Beresford, and, you know, we do receive invitations to go there, that the decision to attend that is strictly your personal decision, whether you wish to go or not. So those type of expenditures, I do understand wholeheartedly that the per diem, you know, probably should not be paid. But in this case, I am very, very comfortable in saying that I submitted that per diem with the perfect, you know, scenario, that in the sense that, you know, I was not violating any regulations of the municipality. I was not changing anything. I was not making any requests that shouldn't be looked at. It comes down to what council feels is a personal issue. And for me, attending a meeting of that nature, I believe I sent council an email, and I'll repeat it for public information. If that same meeting, exactly the same meeting, had have taken place in the Mayor Mashi, and I drove for two hours to the Mayor Mashi, had a one-hour meeting at, say, some location in the Mayor Mashi, and got back in my car and drove another two hours home, I would have been gone for five hours, and council would have no problem paying me. But because it was held in Charle, and I spent four hours at a meeting representing the village of Beldoon, when the president of the world most beautiful bays in the world, and the Bay of Chalaur is considered one of the most beautiful bays in the world, that meeting was attended by all of the mayors in the region. It was attended by several government employees, and the president of the Most Beautiful Bays Association in the world, who came from France. He came in from France to attend that meeting. And to believe that that is a meeting that should not be paid, I have a question about that. And with that said, that's my opinion. I have no problem if council decide to reject that request, because at the end of the day, it is a decision of council. I know that the request came in after the meeting, but there was no meeting to have that request approved. But the other side of the coin is, I have no hesitation in saying that I have attended several votes on meetings that council had already attended, and expenses had already been submitted, and they were motioned after for approval. So this request is no different, and the standards have not been violated. It's exactly the same type of application. And with that said, I'm going to leave it at that. But I am asking council for clarification on whether they will pay that expenditure or not, and that's my feeling on it. But I will also mention that I will respect the decision of council.
I don't recall receiving an email asking for permission of council to attend that meeting. But the Beautiful Bays organization is one that council did not support a donation to in September of 2022. So it was an organization that all of council had decided we were not supporting. So whether you attended or not, you didn't have permission of council to do so. So it was on your time and your dime.
I'm also seeing here in the bylaw that it's, I thought it was mileage that you submitted. And for the mileage, it says it has to be over 30 kilometers outside of the village. So Charle would not be over the 30 kilometers.
When it's an important meeting, I have no issue paying the per diem. But we're going to have to maybe look at where that it falls, and like, not specifically that one, but where it falls, and what we do get per diem for and what we don't get per diem for when it's locally. I would have no problem this time to support that.
I guess I'm going to say a word. As a representative of council, I've attended an event in Beresford as a representative on my own, because of the pride that I take in my position, not because I was looking for a dime. Not saying that you were. I'm just saying that locally, we go representing our council, and I don't think we should be looking for per diem for that.
Counselor Carmichael, are you finished?
Okay, I have a few items on my list, and the first one being the youth organization that we're trying to get going. I would like council's input on the youth program being located in the lower part of the rec center. It's not being used right now. It's two empty rooms, so that we could have it set up if we would like to meet with the youth, and have them highly involved in getting it ready and set up, if we're given the okay. Darrell Culligan is waiting for funding. He's put in an application, or he's looking to put one in. But we need to get this program up and running. We have some interest from the youth and from adults who would like to help out. And I think we need to engage our community in something like this. So I'd like to hear other counselors' input on using the bottom floors of the rec center, or what their views are on this.
I have no problem using the bottom floor of the rec center. The only question I have, like, if you have counselors involved in these youths and so on, who would be, where would the money come from for their salaries? How would we do it? Would we be hiring somebody? Would we have contract? Are you there yet? Like, would we have a contract having somebody in? I'm not sure if people would want to do it just for, you know, just to come in for free, but I'm just wondering, did you look at that avenue yet about payment to these, if counselors would come in with the youth?
Well, right now, that has been discussed, but right now, we're trying to get the youth engaged in something in our village. They've showed interest in maybe doing some sporting events. They've showed interest in cooking. They've showed interest just in gathering, you know, doing some type of craft or whatever. Just trying to get them together, and they would engage their friends as well. Like, our first meeting, we found that some came, but they said their friends didn't want to come, but they know that if they were coming to do something, that they would come with them. So they didn't want to come to the initial meeting about it. But right now, we're just looking at getting something started, and then moving on with that.
Thank you for taking that on. It's, I know it's just a start, and there's a lot of work that's going to be involved in the future, so thank you for starting this up.
I have no issues with you using that, the rooms at the rec center. I'm just wondering, how many youth did you have show up at that meeting?
We had three, and they were probably about 15, 14. That's the rough age, 12 to 17, that we're going to be looking at bringing in, or at least trying to work around getting what their interests are and what they would like to do. We'd like them to get involved in the planning of anything that we're going to do. So like I said, they said that they came, but their friends didn't want to come, but they know that if we were going to put some event on, that they would be interested in coming. But my other thing is that if we do use that bottom part, I would like residents or people in the village, if they would like to donate any pieces of furniture or anything that would help us set it up, that would be awesome as well.
Just a suggestion, you may want to maybe send out like a questionnaire-type thing through the school to hand out to the kids with a list of different things, everything from like, you know, learn to play an instrument, learn to, you know, bake bread or crochet or whatever, to give you an idea as to what their interests are, and then you would know what services to be seeking out.
I'd engage the school as well and talk to them, and they're going to be our good connection with the school and the students, the youth. So would it be okay to bring a motion in then for the next meeting, so that we could move to get the okay to use the bottom part of the rec center?
I don't even think it would need a motion.
I don't know. Like, I'm just, I'm not sure if we do or not.
We didn't have to, we didn't have to have a motion for other people to use it, so I can't see, but I mean, if it requires one.
Okay, the second part of...
If I may just comment on that? I do agree with the statement that we probably don't need a motion, but I also would suggest that you do have a motion, because what that does is that solidifies the position that council is agreeing to move forward with this project. Whereas if there's no motion, things can sway. So I would suggest you come in with one. That's my opinion.
Okay, the second item is setting up the EMO committee. When we met with Mr. Pupard last week, we should have one in place ASAP. And my understanding is you get local residents and companies and industry to put members on this board. So I've already reached out to someone who is attending tonight, who would be interested in this board, but I'm going to have to ask Assistant Clerk Nicole how we should go about this. Were you, was that part of something you did before with the board of the EMO?
Yes, it was. I was on the committee when it was first formed and years after, but there hasn't been an active committee in quite a while. So I think that maybe that's something that the new CAO could look into and get started or get set up.
Okay, and how many, was there a limited amount of members on this board, or was it open?
There was, it wasn't open, wide open, because you need to have some type of strategic plan. You need to have people that are trained, not just people that, you know, want to, if they're not trained, then they don't know what EMO is about, then it's kind of hard to just, you know? So everybody that was on the committee was trained. There was representatives from industries. There was representatives from various government, ambulance, Department of Transportation, Department of Natural Resources, a representative from a lot of different government agencies... different government agencies and employees that were trained also to be in the EOC. So, but it's, it's been, like I said, gone to the wayside for a few years. So I think that may be something that the new CAO should look into and get people trained. And if there's, yeah, you can send out to see who would be interested, but they also have to be trained, I would say. But that's something that you can discuss with Mr. Puphard and the new CAO.
And how often would they meet?
We met, we used to meet quarterly, but we did have some monthly meetings and with different people, different representatives. We had a plan that was in place. But again, that was three councilors and myself and Lorenzo Grant at the time that developed a plan. So I believe that council has to take the initiative to get the plan going before they decide to get everybody on board. I think it's something that needs to, you need to take a step back kind of and see what your first step should be. And then, you know, you can get volunteers and stuff on board. That's just what I've seen over the years.
Sorry, can I just, Councilor Carmichael and Mayor Arsenal were appointed to standing EMO committee in October 2021. So there's already a standing committee established by appointment of council.
But I thought that Mr. Puphard said when a new council comes in, there's a new board? Is that, or did I-
Well, I think he's talking about the amalgamated, the amalgamated communities where ours is already established. So we have a standing committee already in place. So there was a motion in, on October 18th, 2021 to appoint Councilor Carmichael and Mayor Arsenal to the EMO standing committee. So that's all stuff that they should be working on.
I wasn't aware. Sorry.
I think, I think Nicole has a good idea. I think the new CAO is going to be helpful in that regard. Yeah.
Okay, but there's a standing committee in place. So either people are stepping down or we're appointing a new committee. Or how do you plan on doing that?
I don't believe we followed through on anything with this committee because we, we need something in place and none of us are aware of any plans. That's all that I'm saying. And in order for us to move forward with this new committee or a committee with new members, we have to move on it. We've had a couple of instances in our, in our community that has caused concern with several, you know, the changing weather patterns as well as power outages. So without having a plan in place that we're all aware of, we're nowhere. So we have to do something for sure.
I think part of that is from my understanding that normally when a new council is voted in, there is an orientation session of, to give us this type of information and what we're supposed to do with, with these committees and how we're supposed to proceed with them and the procedures and, you know, how to, but our CAO at the time, Mr. Landon Lee, did not provide us with any of that. So we just have to kind of learn as we go and then went through two more and never got orientation with them either. So I think that kind of hindered us as well. So maybe now that he's coming back, he'll provide us with that stuff.
Well, I'll be looking to see how we move on this. Okay. And my last one, we sat down, Mr. Culligan, myself and Councilor Carmichael and Joanne Hashi, the supervisor back at the salmon barrier. And we were discussing the things that we wanted to improve on for the barrier as well as the park this summer before it opens. Okay. So we came up with a few things, especially back at the barrier. We had discussed last year about getting some vending machines back there. So Mr. Culligan is in, works with the vending company that does the arena to see if they would set something up back at the barrier because that has always been a request for back there. Also, we discussed putting a sculptured salmon made out of wood. If you know where the salmon barrier is, it's a round circular land, a piece of land. And I envision this beautiful salmon structure there. Anyways, we discussed that and looked into seeing, I guess it had been talked about in the past and some estimates had come in and it was going to be roughly around 500. I'm not sure. But anyways, it was looked into again and that has doubled. But I was thinking about getting a sponsor so that their name could be on it at the bottom of this beautiful structure. And maybe we could request Glencore seeing that they are part of the salmon barrier as maybe their final touch to it, hurrah, back there. But anyways, that was discussed as well. And looking at souvenirs, we need to expand the souvenirs back at the barrier as well as the park. They need to be more evident of the village of Beldune. People are coming here and being drawn to these beautiful spots, but they really don't have any souvenirs to offer the visitors. So we looked at getting some souvenirs for both the park and the salmon barrier with Beldune's logo. We also looked at the pamphlets for the barrier. They needed to be reviewed because they are so old. They are so old. So we were just going over those as well. When we were talking about the park, there seemed to be an issue about fire pits and how there's not enough for each of the locations in the park for campers and stuff. So I know that we had discussed it before, but maybe that's something we really need to look into to make sure that there are enough fire pits for the campers that are at the park. I don't think, I don't even know how many they have, but they don't have enough apparently. And another thing we looked at for the park is bringing the Sunday music back and putting it at the bandstand or the gazebo at the park. We're going to try to bring that forward again this year. And these were just, you know, a few things that we want to encourage because our tourism needs a boost. And these two locations are part of our community and our village that we take pride in. So we have to start moving on improving their locations so that more visitors will come and we have something more to offer them. So I'd like some input from others if they want to add to that.
Yes, that's, that's all great ideas. And as we're talking about, with the ATV trail coming, it's going to bring a lot more people probably into our village once the roads are designated for where they can go. So I think that that's amazing and to bring our people and tourism to these two areas because they're like gems here in the village, both of them. So, and the famine, I know it was talked about before. It's a great idea to have it and perhaps Glencore would have it. But yeah, I think we need to do that because, you know, anybody goes to the ATV at the barrier or the, well, the campground is accessible to canteens. So, but to have something there to drink or snack while you're there, you know, just to look at the beauty and of the barrier. So I agree, we need to do something. We need to move forward and make our village known.
The, I had sent out by email to council before, but it's about the equipment for the fire department. I had sent out the list to council. I did have some discussion with other municipalities in terms of how they received donations of this type. So if council is open to the concept, they also see the, there was the report from the deputy fire chief on what they're going to use the equipment for and what they anticipate those additional costs would be for the fire department. So if council is open to this, I could add it to the March 20th meeting for council to accept the equipment by motion, which is what most municipalities do when accepting these type of gifts or equipment or such. So I just need a directive as to whether council wants to add it as a motion.
Yes, please.
Yes.
This item was in reference to the Episcopal Challenge 2023. Ryan Wilbur had sent out an email requesting to know who was going to be the point of contact for the municipality for him.
I guess that would be Landon Lee.
Probably the CAO.
If not him, Darrell, maybe Darrell until he-
Okay. And the other item was presented by the Recreation Wellness Coordinator, Darrell Culligan, and it's a request he received from East Coast ICE to extend the closing of the arena to accommodate their use.
I'm not interested. I think there's already enough repair that needs to be done at the arena. And I don't want to extend the closing and put any more wear and tear. That's unnecessary on the equipment.
If I may, Worship. I would, I would agree with that comment. We've already received a, an estimate as to what the dehumidifiers will cost to be replaced. And that's $70,000. Our arena is not geared for the extended heat of the summer. So for me personally, I believe we need to support our rink. I believe we need to have it going. I know with the changes from the Chalora Regional Service Commissions that Beldune will stand alone with its arena. But the other side of the coin is, is we have always stood alone in supporting our arena. And I have no issues with supporting it in the future. But when you look at these extended dates, it is far too hard on a building that is not geared to function in late April, May and June type thing. So I would be opposed to it also.
I also would be opposed to it because, like you say, our rink is, is aging and the equipment's getting older. So if we want to, we want to save our rink and arena as much as we can. So I would be opposed to this.
I am as well, but it's unfortunate that we have to, you know, say no to something like this that is a good fit for kids and ice and hockey in our community. But our arena has to play an important part of keeping it up and running as well.
I think that we also need to look at, you know, what the expenses that are going to be coming due with our arena and like Ron said about standing on our own with it. I think we really need to stop using our arena budget to fund private events.
Okay. So can we get a motion to adjourn then? Get a seconded?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye. Motion pass?